All right, very good. Then I would ask that you all join me. I would call the meeting to order at 6:30. And if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. We begin this evening, we have a couple of presentations. One of them, the first presentation is 3.1. This is from our auditor, Len Caristimo, from Diarcangelo and Company. And I want to give us the word on the audit, we'd appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm not sure, am I able to share the screen, or do you just want me to talk through it?
You can, you can share it.
Okay.
It worked, anyone?
Yeah, I'm trying to get to the right screen. Looks like it won't let me do a whole screen, so I'll just have to do snapshots here.
That's good.
So you see the executive summary there?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll start here. I'd like to thank Shelley and all our staff for all the help that they gave us. You know, this is, I'm not used to doing audits in November and December. I don't think, we hardly ever do audits in November and December, but hopefully this will be few and far between. When we're back next year, I'd like to be giving you a report, at least in October. I think, regardless, I think the audit went very well. I mean, we were able to get everything that we needed from the prior auditor. And, you know, Shelley was very helpful and her staff was amazing getting stuff uploaded to our portal. We did spend a few days out at the district doing the audit. And I don't, I don't think we really had much, much problems, you know, the turnaround was pretty quick. But we were able to get everything done. The financial statements themselves, toggle down the, the basic financial statements in the big book, just to kind of give you an overview. The basic financial statements, we issue an independent auditor's report. And we opine on the, the financial statements. We had an unmodified opinion, which is free from any gap departures or, or scope limitations. So we were able to get our hands on anything that we needed to look at for the audit. And there was no issues with that. The only thing that's in the report that's a little bit different is there was, we did have an emphasis of a matter, because we had to have a prior period adjustment to correct a few, a couple of things from the prior year. And both related to employee benefits, long-term liabilities. So nothing affected the general fund or anything. This was all the long-term liability postings. The compensated absence liability was overstated by about $2.7 million. That's because in the prior year, it was calculated using basically a per DM rate calculated based on the, like a teacher's salary. You know, but it should have taken into account that they were wanting to get $55 a day. When they retire. So we had to redo that and put it down, and then we'll see where that comes into play in the next couple of pages. The other item that we had was a $2.2 million decrease in liabilities. And they had to do with the accrual for retirement incentives. Because of the way the accounting standards work, if the, although it's a, seems to be a standing thing in the contracts to have that retirement incentive. The offer has to be accepted before you can record it as a long-term liability. So just because the offer's out there, it doesn't mean you record the liability. So there was that too. So in total, you would see on the financial statements, a prior period adjustment, about $4.9 million. It doesn't affect your general fund, it's just the, what we call the government-wide. The government-wide statements are where we pull everything together between, we add up all the funds together. Between the general fund, the school lunch fund, special aid capital fund. We add all that together, and then we add all the long-term liabilities and all the long-term assets. So it's only affecting that, it doesn't affect your general fund.
And Len, can I insert that those calculations were made in error by the previous auditors?
You can.
Yeah. Now, those errors were not calculated by anybody in the district, so, just so that we clarify that.
The other report that we issue, I'm sorry, I'm kind of hoarse, this is my third meeting today. Let's see, we do a report on compliance and on internal control or financial reporting. And in that, we didn't have any material or significant deficiencies, which is a good report. Last year, there was this, there was a comment on the report being late. But I didn't see that as the school district's problem. Because you have your information ready to file with the state, your state report, your ST3, on time. So it really didn't delay the audit work. It just seems like the audit firm delayed the audit work. So I didn't see where that was an applicable finding, or something that should be on your ledger of findings here. So we consider that as not an issue this year. The other report that we issue, it gets kind of like more granular now, we're looking at just the single audit programs. In this year, we, we audited two programs. We audited the Title I programs and the Title II program. We had to include the Title II program, I know it looks odd. There was a little snafu when we calculated the, the amount of aid that was coming into the school lunch fund. It was about $58,000. We had to add to it after, once we were reviewing it in the end. And we found that this number here, this percentage total of what we tested, has to be over 20%. But with that $58,000 made the Title I, 19.8%. So there's no rounding when you're doing the single audit determination. So we, we had to pick another program. And the Title II got us over the 20% threshold, now we're at 23%. The total federal award program expenditures this year is about $1,063,000. And that's, you know, higher than it was in the prior year. Prior year was about $891,000, and that was due solely to school lunch program, which added another $189,000 to the expenses. I mean, to the revenues. The next page is the, this is a communication letter, and I'm not sure if I can... Can you see the, this required communication letter on the screen?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. This required communication letter is, we should be having conversations at the beginning of the audit. If there's an audit committee or certain board members that want to discuss the opening part of the audit. We're supposed to do, you know, talk about risk assessment, new accounting pronouncements, new auditing standards, and that type of thing. And if there's any issues that you have, because of the timing, you know, we, we kind of like didn't do that this time around. But what we're required to talk about at the end, you know, significant audit matters, qualitative aspects of the, the accounting practices, and if there was any changes in accounting policies. There was no changes this year in accounting standards. Next year, we'll be implementing, we'll have, well, the school, they have to, what they call GASB-84, and it has to do with fiduciary accounting. And that, that causes a few hiccups. It's where we're going to put the extra classroom fund, because now the extra classroom fund is going to be either reported as what they call a custodial fund, which will replace your current trust and agency fund, or it will be recorded as a special revenue fund. The ball's still up in the air of what we record it as, but that's something we discussed in the implementation process later on. Whatever's in that trust and agency fund now, it's usually payroll withholdings and that type of thing. At the end of the year, that'll have to show up in the, the general fund. And they'll be changing the, the state report to coincide with this GASB-84 as well. So it does cause a few hiccups. It'll be, obviously, every year, they come up with a pronouncement, there's a few more note disclosures. So I'm sure that'll be a big thing for us next year as well. We also talk about accounting estimates, because the accounting estimates, if you, you know, this all kind of more relates to the government-wide financial statements, where we have all the long-term liabilities. And because they're so susceptible to those estimates, the actuarial liabilities are, you know, there's a discount rate that they assume. And if you look in the notes of the financial statements, if there's a sensitivity chart in there, we'll tell you if it's, if, if they used 1% higher or 1% lower. It causes a huge difference in the, the actuarial liability that's on the books. So it'll affect your overall financials. We also talked about the uncorrected misstatements or corrected misstatements. We didn't have any uncorrected misstatements. Everything was corrected, but if you look at the end of the report, there's a list of journal entries, any one of these with these GW's on the side. This is how we convert the fund financial statements to the government-wide financial statements. We have to do this just to maintain our independence. So you're kind of proving this is an attachment to the representation letter that we have the district sign. And I think all these entries were really, these types of conversion entries, the only two entries we really had were these two. There was a band principal that was paid down, but it kind of got hidden a little bit in the, the capital fund in error. And that's a common thing that happens a lot of clients, of fiscal advisors. And then down below, there was a little reclassification we had to do for this $58,000 that we talked about in the past. It was just a, it was just a reclassification. It didn't affect the overall results of the school lunch fund. So, you know, that was pretty much, those were really routine type, type items. The only thing I want to bring to your attention is the, as far as reserves are concerned, there was, we're just recommending that the district come, have a reserve plan, like an overall policy that sets forth, back in 2016, the education law changed a little bit to kind of like delineate more of what the board's responsibilities are. So for reserves to be funded or appropriated, it should go through the board. And I know in the appropriations, you usually do it through the budget. But if there's any appropriations thereafter, decreases in any of the reserves, those should be approved by the board. But any funding should be approved by the, by the board as well. So usually, a lot of our school districts, they'll do a resolution in June, giving the, the business official or the authority to add to the reserves within a certain threshold. And that's part of this reserve plan. So the reserve plan, each, each of the reserves would have an ideal balance that you would shoot for, like if you were doing the retirement contribution reserve. Well, what is a threshold? What's the limit that you want for that reserve? Is it two times the amount of the retirement bill? Is it three times? I got some that have five times the amount, and we'll look at that in a little bit. You want to add anything to that, Shelley?
No, that's, you know, the board gets the reserve balances when we do the budgeting. We didn't, I didn't go into much depth with that, and I think that would be a good thing to give them the entire plan. You know, especially if we're getting closer to using them up. I think they really, they do that, and that'll be a good thing for the financial statements, for the finance committee too.
Right. And in notes of the financial statements, there's a, there's a, a good description of each one of the reserves. Even the, the capital reserves that you have, there, it's, I got the three of them described within the notes. So if you ever have to make reference to it, it's easier for me, and I think it's easier for you to have that in there. The, my voice is kind of going here. The, again, the... Excuse me?
What?
Does somebody have a question, or?
I don't think so.
Okay. The, the two comments to the status of the prior year findings. Again, we were, we talked about the, the reporting requirements and those being late in the prior year, or considered late in the prior year. But the, the other one was the school lunch funding, as far as the expenditures being charged to the school lunch fund. Basically, employee benefits being charged to the school lunch fund. This year, those benefits were charged to the school lunch fund. You'll see like $102,000 as we look in the, in the future schedules that we'll look at. So that was, that was that for that letter. The, back to the, the executive summary, the only other report that we issue is on the extra classroom funds. And here, you know, I could tell you right now, it's like, we don't issue any clean audit reports on the extra classroom fund, just because what it is. We did issue a, a management letter on the findings that we had in the school lunch fund. But I'll just summarize them for you. The biggest issue that we had was the general ledger that was being used to track each club's balances. Weren't reconciling to the final report and wasn't reconciling to cash. But I'm talking to Shelley and, and Mike, they're converting everything over to the WindCap. Because before, it was all just kept on Excel schedules, and I think, kind of like the formulas maybe got a little off, where it wasn't calculating properly. So that's something that should be corrected in, in the next year.
Yeah, we put that in our corrective action plan, that now that those books are coming into the district office, because previously, they were never in the district office, they had Central Treasure taking care of them. So now that they're coming to the district office, that will be on our system, on our WindCap, and using our software, there won't be a problem.
And some of the prior comments that the, the prior auditors had, they had issues with timely deposits. We didn't notice that. Once again, to the central treasurer's hands, it seemed to get to the bank in a timely manner. But I can't speak to the, the time that the money was actually received by the student or the faculty advisor, and when that got to the, the central treasurer. So there's a little caveat with that. They had issues with sales decks in the, in the prior year, we didn't have that issue this year. There is one club that has a negative balance, the varsity club has a negative $1,400 balance that carried over from the prior year. So that seems to be an ongoing issue.
Right, and we took care of that. They deposited the money on the July bet, so there was just a, a difference in that. It was a timing issue, and going forward, that won't happen again.
Yeah, because next year, with the extra classroom fund, it's going to be a little odd, because it's going to be, because right now, it's kind of like on a cash basis. But next year, we're going to have to pick up liabilities and expenses. So if there's anything like that, we'll, we'll have to pick it up as an accrual. And so the club will show more of a truer balance. So you'll know if your, you know, if your yearbook fund is, you know, using next year's deposits to pay this year's bills, you know, if they're upside down. The rest of this is your numbers, and I'll just go over this quickly. Here, you know, you can see that you're restricted, your reserves went up about $180,000. That was mainly because of the, the employee, the employee's retirement reserve going up that we just spoke about. So that is about three times your ERS bill, which is about $339,000 a year. And this is what I was talking about before, this employee benefit accrued liability reserve. It really should, when the, if the comptroller came and looked at it, looked at it, they would say it's overfunded, because now, with the prior period adjustment that we had, because it decreased the liability by $2 million, that, that compensated absence amount, that means this liability, this reserve right now, is overfunded by about $1.4 million. So something will have to be done with that. Either you spend it down over the next few years, or you, you can transfer it to a capital reserve. And I know in, in the capital reserves, you haven't started funding the 2019, '20 reserve for $2.5 million. So that might be something that goes into your reserve plan of how you want to deal with that.
I'm just seeing it up towards the budget.
The, the unassigned fund balance did go up a little bit, about $448,000. So right now, you're, this year, you're at 8% on fund balance. Oh, that, that was the other thing. If you were to look at last year's report, these balances wouldn't agree to last year's audit report. There was some odd calculations in the, the balances, which caused the, the reserves to be higher than what they should be. It's almost like they took the amount that was being appropriated for 1920, and they added that to the reserve. I, I don't know why that was done. But these agree to Shelley's schedules now that you normally get. The, and then the overall fund balance decreased in the general fund, about $124,000. But, you know, taking that into context, you got to think, well, the 20% state aid reduction from the receivables, there was a, the excess cost aid in August, that was $70,000 deduct, that wasn't accrued. And then the boat, they took away 20% of your boatsies September aid, which was another $98,000. So it was $168,000 that was taken away from aid. If you hadn't had that, you would have actually had a surplus overall in the general fund. The, the school lunch fund, there was a lot of moving parts in the school lunch fund. As you see a little bit later, in the next page, that the, you know, the revenues went up $180,000, mainly because of the, 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 all the COVID meal reimbursements. So, but the, the expenses went up $172,000. Part of that was because you started charging the, the employee benefits to us, so that was about a $102,000 increase. So if you were to look at the revenues that you had in the previous year in 2019, and compare them to the expenses that you have in 2020, maybe deducting a little bit for the extra cost for, you know, maybe a few more COVID meals, which may be about $70,000 worth. This year, you would have had a $122,000 loss. Which makes sense, because last year, you had about a $20,000 loss. You just added $120,000 in employee benefits. So it's something that, I have several school districts that have the same structural deficit issue. Sometimes it just boils down to the amount of salaries that are being charged, or, or some sort of a structural issue with the, the operations of the school lunch fund. The, the debt service fund, you do have $223,000 in that available to be appropriated. That increase, $179,000 mainly came from the closed parking lot project, which was $136,000 that got added to there, and the remainder was the, the interest and earnings that got added back in. And then the capital fund, mainly, a lot of the capital funds got wrapped up, or they were funded except for the 2017 project. So right now, for the 2017 project, you have a $6.4 million bond anticipation note. So you, you would normally have a deficit once you, when you have a bond anticipation note. Once the bond anticipation note is converted to a serial bond, or it's funded through appropriations, that the, the deficit will reverse itself. And if you ever want to see a schedule in the, in the audit report that you have, on page 48 is a list of all the, all the capital projects, and it ties out to that $760,000, $770,000 deficit.
You almost done, Len?
Just a little bit more to go.
Okay.
Again, in the general fund, just your, your balance sheet, just a summary. You can see right now, you're, you look in the green box, your assets to liabilities. Your assets are about four times your liabilities, which is a good place to be. And the overall, 28%, your fund balance is about 28% of your current expenditures. So that, that's also a, a good number, because the comptroller looks at anything below 10% as being, you know, a demerit on your fiscal stress score. And then you can see the 8% and the 6.2% there. This is just a summary, I can toggle down. We talked about the school lunch fund, just some of the details in here. If you were to look at these two line items, you would see that the, the decrease of about $402,000 receivable, some of it timing, but $168,000, that was the 20% deduct. And then you can see down below, this assigned, mainly decreased because of the, the incomferences from the buses in the prior year, not being in the current year. As far as the revenues and expenses are, go, you know, as you know, there would, a considerable decrease in state aid. About $1.8 million decrease in state aid. 1.9, almost $2 million of that was for building aid. And that was mainly because you had a $2.1 million decrease in the debt service. So that was, that's pretty reasonable. And then if you look at these two line items here, that's mainly your real property taxes and your STAR, which was about a 3.5% increase, about $229,000. That's about as quick as I can go. I know Shelley wanted me to go a little faster, but...
That's okay. So going forward with this audit company, what we'll do is we'll have a finance committee, and we'll go through that whole thing and not waste time in a board meeting doing that. So that way, we can get into more detail and drill it down better. Thank you, Len.
Thanks, Len.
All right, thank you very much.
Any other questions for Len before he pets out on us? Len, thank you. The word I got from our business office was, you were very professional in everything you did, and they appreciated the cooperation and thought you, you and your firm did a great job.
Good, thank you very much. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Len.
Pass in.
What's that?
Thank you for squeezing us in.
Yeah, it worked out okay.
It did, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I do understand that we have a, another presentation item 3.2. I believe Fred Langworthy from Watchdog has some information for us. Is that correct, Kyle?
I think he's on there. He said he was. He just sent me a text. Fred, you there?
John, one quick thing before we move on. Shelley, the, the, the lunch program employee benefits is something that we've talked about quite a bit in the past in the transparency, because it was coming from general funds in, in the previous budget years. And, and this kind of reflects that, correct?
That's correct. We had increased it in the budget in the general fund and removing money over there to help them out with their program. So that's the transparency thing that we, that the state comptroller actually pointed out. So it's that we need to be more transparent. And so we started doing that and that's the result.
Yep, okay.
So I, I don't think Fred made it on, John. So what, basically what he was going to do was go over the, the report that I already forwarded to you guys. So you have it. I don't know if there's any question currently as far as what we're doing in the capital project. Everything is moving forward well. We've had no major issues. As you know, Shelley and I and Andy meet with Watchdog and all the contractors every two weeks on Friday. So we're in obviously constant communication. Things are, things are going well out back with the new bus maintenance facility. I told you before that, and you could see in the pictures on that report, they've got it all tarp'd off. It's heated inside up to 55 degrees so they can lay the block. That's the temperature that's required in order to, to lay those things and make sure they're, they're safely and done the right way. We're doing some work inside, down in the basement with some support beams and some other stuff that was sort of compromised and some different things over the years. You can see the pictures from the front of the building on the gym where they're working on the storefront there. They've got the steel up and now we're waiting for the actual, they actually have to prefab what the storefront will look like, and that takes several weeks for them to do that. So they're in the process there. I think, I'm not sure if they had any pictures this time of the roof. But the roof was, was very well done. The trim looks outstanding. Watchdog and Andy and myself have been up there and it looks great. We think they did a really good job. So obviously they're done for the season, but in the spring they'll start up again and we'll keep moving. But everything's, you know, going well as far as the capital project.
Okay, very good, Kyle. Very much appreciated the photos that were included with that report. They gave a perspective on exactly where we stand as well as the, the text of that report. So we appreciate that. The next item on the agenda.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna break in again, John, sorry. Kyle, one question regarding the weatherization of the new bus maintenance facility and, and the cost for that work and, and the cost for the heating. Is, is that all something that was planned in their bid, or is that an extra cost to them?
They have to pay it. That's up to them. We, we cost us nothing more than, than the original cost. And then we made that very clear. As we moved forward, there was some question whether or not we would pay that, and we said absolutely not. If you plan to do that over the winter, you, you're going to assume that cost.
Along with snow plowing.
Exactly. Along with snow plowing, we keep that cleared up for the contractors to get in and out. So that's no additional cost. Nothing out of the, nothing out of the capital project for the district.
Okay, thank you.
Good. The, this is the point in the agenda. We normally would go to public comments, but being as how we had to have this meeting virtually, there's not an opportunity for public comments. And we certainly appreciate those when they're made available. We, just as a note at this point, we hate going virtual. We had to go virtual. We had no choice in this situation. And this is kind of along the same lines of the decisions that had to be made to go to a virtual learning format earlier this week. There were just a number of staff in quarantine, or some positive cases within our school community. So not a choice we like, not a choice we wanted to make, but wanted to make. So moving on to item five, that I believe there is no need for an executive session at this point. We will, at the end of the meeting, probably go into executive session, given some of the board members have requested that based on some of the situation out there. So that would be for personnel issues, I believe. We will move on to item six, and this is consent agenda changes. I believe at this point there are none. Is that correct, Kyle?
Correct.
Okay, item seven is the consent agenda. And then include approval of minutes. It includes approval of CSE recommendations, approval of financial reports, approval of prior authorizations and attachments. Also, approval of position resignations and terminations, and approval of leaves of absence, along with approval of appointments. So at this point, to get those on the table, I would take a motion getting those on the table. Do I have a motion on that?
I'll move, John.
Michelle moves. Do I have a second?
I'll second, yeah.
Joe seconds. Any questions or comments on any of those items? All those in favor? Hi, Brian?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Heidi?
Hi.
Andrea?
Hi.
And Michelle?
Hi.
That motion passes. Moving on to item eight. Those are reports. And the first on the agenda would be the CDEP committee. And Amy, would you like to report on that?
Certainly. Our last meeting was November 18th. And on that day, the department coordinator shared with us their feedback from the November 6th staff development day. They were very appreciative of the time. It was a full day. They always wish they had more time, but they were able to accomplish quite a bit. We did have some teachers who were unable to attend our clear touch training that afternoon. So as a result, Chris Greco was able to turn P for them at a later date on November 20th. So the teachers who missed the training were able to be trained on those panels that we use, that they're finding very helpful with remote education instruction. So Chris also was able to train the special education paras, since they also use those same panels with students. One of our department coordinators shared an update with us at the meeting that I thought was very important that I share with you. Christina Hunt, our ELA coordinator, had gone to a literacy network meeting that same day as CDEP. And she shared with us that it's hard because here we want to be with our students as much as possible. And so it's not always easy. We're struggling a little bit just with the hybrid model, the remote model, not seeing students on a regular basis. So she didn't realize until she had gone to that countywide meeting that many of the teachers in the other districts have not met their children physically at all this year. That they have been remote from the beginning. So for her, she realized that those two days a week are a great improvement on that and that she appreciates the time even more so. So I just wanted to share that with you. She can't imagine what it would be like to not have the in-person days with our children. So the other thing is that we're also very concerned about remote instruction and the impact on student writing. So one of the things that we're going to include in our CDEP revision is just to focus across the grade levels and content areas on how to make sure that we are sharing writing strategies to make sure that our students, that we address their needs with being remote since March for large periods of time. The other thing that we are really trying to focus on is the attendance. So as you know, we've been working with Harvard. At the beginning of November, we launched our intervention for our randomly picked families. So actually on Monday, we'll send out the second report. After looking at that and realizing how helpful it was, Kevin and I have been working on a different type of approach, using Parent Square to send letters for our students, for their parents, to let all parents of sixth through 12th grade students who the children has, has missed, or the student has missed five or more days, make sure that they're aware of that. So each week what we started to do is we are sending individualized letters to those parents that basically are showing a year to date, how many dates that the student has been out, along with that period of that week, how many dates they've missed. So I think Kevin's going to talk a little bit more about that when he shares in a few minutes. But we are really trying to make sure that we let parents know when we're concerned about students and they're not logging in remotely. On December 1st, we also received a memo from State Ed about attendance. And that basically, for the first time, the state wants us to be able to document and report whether a child was learning remotely, was learning in person, and that is going to impact state aid. So luckily, we have been so focused with the attendance that we're actually in a very good place compared to other districts. We're now just waiting for School Tool, our management system, to be able to allow us to pull some of that information in an easy way. Either way, we have it. And I'm glad that we did spend the time on that focus this year. So that's really where we're at at this point as far as CDEP and the departments. Does anyone have any questions? If you think of something, please feel free to email me. We do have another CDEP meeting next week.
I have a question.
I have a question.
With going remote this week, and the staff changes, are we, do we have somebody doing attendance? What's happening with that?
So right now we have Dorothy who is in, and she is focusing on the sixth through 12th grade on students. And I believe she's there for the morning part, half, half day, right? And Jesse Glanster is helping us with the elementary and same thing. She's in for half the day. So we're still able to track it. And also if they're not able to reach Dorothy or Jesse, they also know that they can reach out to me since I'm working directly with School Tool as well this year.
And who's actually trying to contact the parents or students in regard to their absenteeism?
So what we're doing is that Parent Square secure report. This is the nice thing about Parent Square. What it's allowed us to do is we can actually go into School Tool and we can pull all the attendance information. We can say, your child has been absent for 15 days this year so far. During the last week, they have been absent for three or four days, however many it is. That letter gets tied to a student ID, which we can now send out through Parent Square. And in the email, we're, we're trying to encourage parents to contact the attendance office if they have questions. So that way they can reach out. And I think Kevin's going to share with you that he's already receiving calls from parents who are like, wait a minute, something's wrong. My child was there. So we are trying to engage parents through Parent Square at this point, in addition to all those other ways that we're reaching out to parents to contact them about concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any other questions for Amy? Thank you, Amy. Looking forward to next week. The next item on the agenda is the city BOS report. And I will tell you that our last BOS's meeting was November 18th. And our next meeting will be December 12, December 16th. Both of those meetings, again of necessity, were virtual meetings. And the last BOS's meeting we had was virtually, you might as well say it was everything COVID. The teachers over there are doing a good job. We're under impossible circumstance. They're wonderful job. Several of the component districts either have buildings or entire districts on remote learning at this time. And Sandy Creek up until the other day was actually almost a standalone. Students from these districts not identified as testing positive and not having been exposed or not in quarantine may attend city programming. We, we will follow situation very closely. And certainly if a student is identified by their district or the health department is having potential close contact with an infected person, they would be required to revert to remote learning. The exceptional education program at Central Square, run by city, is fully remote after two adults and a student initially tested positive. That number has increased to seven adults and again, a single student. That program is now fully remote. And protocols and procedures have been strictly enforced in all those programs. And other environmental factors are being looked at, which may have been causation to, to the positive tests at Central Square. We're looking into that. Our advanced metal manufacturing program at city recently acquired a precision plasma cutter. Students are now being trained on its use, which utilizes computer aided software to develop and design, which is, it is imported through a thumb, thumb drive the machine. And then the program is developed, which directs the, the cutter's path. This represents the latest industrial cutting edge technology. And it is now available to our students and they're learning on that. Sui County School Boards Association, we continue to look at dates. In January, Senator Ritchie and Assemblyman Barclay could be able to join us for a legislative forum. Again, this is very important in that we need to make our legislative elected officials aware of the needs of the districts, where we're at, and where our concerns lie. And all of this, and being certainly our final situations. Haven't been any recent Board of Directors meetings for Sui County School Boards Association. As far as Central New York School Boards Association, we continue to host the series, You Do What for a Living? The latest video available at that site, at their website, features Eric Wing of the Division of Building Information Modeling at CSEs Companies. All vendors in, all videos in the series are available for viewing at the Central New York School Boards Association site. In addition, Central New York is producing another series on pathways on STEM, STEM related careers. The first of these was originally presented virtually last night. And it is available on demand at the Central New York School Boards Association site. And individual and overview of giving an individual an overview of what the students should be turned with and the courses they may wish to take in preparation for a career and, on a STEM related career. State School Boards Association, State School Boards has taken steps in an attempt to get transportation aid restored. And now being, transportation aid, which is being denied the districts. Sandy Creek is far from being alone in that. It's across the state. Based on their lobbying efforts, and those of the New York State School Boards Association, the Senate did pass legislation in their house to try and take a look at that. That is Senate Bill 8585A, I believe. And there's a lot of feeling that they're actually making some headway. And the State Division of Budget has agreed to take another look at that and go to bat to try and get. Division of Budget has agreed to take another look at that and go to bat to try and get transportation aid to the districts. We all thought we were doing the right thing. We maintained the transportation routes to deliver food and instructional supplies, and now the state seems to be telling us, can't you take a joke? We're not going to give you that aid. There's a lot of encouraging stuff out of Albany that that may be reversed because they're taking a real close look at that. So that is out there. And again, attached along with your Boce's report in your packet is the Points of Pride document, which indicates the different things, the different divisions that Boce's are doing in terms of classroom activity and instructional support services to the districts. So that's about what I've got. Are there any questions regarding that? Okay. At this point, I would move on to the principals' reports. And Kevin, I guess I would begin with you.
So obviously, we just transitioned to the remote learning piece. So at the sixth through 12th grade level, the transition has really been seamless because seventh through 12th anyway has been remote already, three days a week. So it's been a nice seamless transition, and I've kind of done a temperature check, if you will, communicating with a lot of different teachers about how it's been going and our engagement from our students, and it's been very positive, much more positive than it was in the spring trying to get students engaged. So we could definitely say that we built the capacity with most of our students here to engage remotely, but there are lots of struggles to it. Internet connectivity and a wide range of other things. So that kind of leads into the next piece is the engagement piece, the attendance piece. So we've gone and done a couple of things to try to pull our students in. Right from the beginning of the year, we've utilized grade-level team meetings. I've been working with both the high school and middle school on a biweekly basis to communicate about our students that are engaging appropriately and those that aren't. We're making phone calls, sending emails, making house visits, all of the things that you can imagine. And we're also now utilizing the new tool, Parent Square, in order to send a message to our parents, letting them know that they've missed a certain amount of days since the beginning of the year, but also the amount of days that they have missed in the course of a week, so that parents can really see those numbers. And we're just being transparent, and we're honest with our community, so they know and our parents know exactly what's happening and the amount of time that our students are missing and how that impacts their grades, so that, you know, when there is a point and we take a look at their grades, the parents are aware, and then there's a correlation likely between those grades and attendance. The next piece is meeting the social emotional needs of our students. We, you know, we had several things planned for this month leading up to Christmas. It was all coming together, so a lot of positivity, and now we're not here, which is a struggle. So what we're really trying to do by the counselor's office is trying to change our message a little bit. It's really been a lot of, okay, attendance grades, and now we're really trying to look at the well-being of our community members, of our students, and of our parents. So that's kind of just a change to meet their needs. You know, we're working with a Harvard study. We had a great meeting today. We're actually still working on the attendance piece, starting to transition into some post-secondary planning for our students. Luckily, we've been in good standing there. Things have gone very well for post-secondary planning. So there's not a ton of stuff we saw that we really needed to change or do differently, but we're always looking to improve. So we're going to look at some pieces as we move forward. And the last thing I have is there hasn't really been any developments on athletics whatsoever, so we're still waiting on that piece at the seventh through 12th level.
Any questions for Kevin? Tim?
I have a quick question. So I just am wondering, just the last couple of days, we've had a little bit of internet issues here where Maya has been able to connect, but I'm just wondering how they police when students are in fact not participating or if there is technology issues.
There's no real way for us to police, other than they take attendance. Our teachers are taking regular attendance if the students are participating or not, so we can track that. There's no way for us to track what's happening in terms of connectivity at home. We just don't have that. Any technology doesn't communicate with what's happening in that place, which is one of the difficulties of our district, is it's so large and there's some places that truthfully can't even get the internet. So we've had to make accommodations for both students.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else?
Kevin, I have one for Kevin. Kevin, Amy mentioned that you're working through with the School Tool, trying to make the contact with the parents. Would you, do you think that that's successful? Do you, what's your take on it? What's your response been so far?
I'll be honest, I think it just depends on who you're communicating with. I think we've had some great successes with some parents and then some other parents. You know, it just takes a little more communication, I'll put it that way. So we've definitely seen improvement, and I think that the expectations are there. So we are seeing more engagement than we've seen in the past. So we're trying everything we can to pull our students in. Other than just handling the attendance piece, Dorothy actually, she supports us in reaching out and communicating with parents and getting students engaged as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else for Kevin? Tim?
You don't want to keep firing questions at Kevin? I just, you know, the Monday before Thanksgiving, Kate Byde had not been sending Chromebooks and iPads back and forth, and Kyle really wanted to make that change, and I'm glad that he prompted us to do that. It paid off. As you know, last Friday, we ended up going remote. Kids had been taking their devices home for about a week, so we didn't lose a day of instruction. They had their Chromebooks, they had their iPads. Last Friday went very well. We were very glad to be back in person on Monday. Unfortunately, as you know, then Monday night, we had to make a tough decision. But as tough as it is right now, remote, I'm happy to say that I had a lot of teachers reporting to me and grade levels reporting to me today that they actually had 100% attendance throughout the day with the elementary kids that they're getting on. The ones that are not getting on or having issues, as Michelle asked about in the elementary, the teachers are following up with a Parent Square message quickly, or they're emailing or they're calling and talking with the parent and just talking through the things that they may have missed because their internet acted up. We actually had a family today, their internet started acting up, and the next thing we knew, they were sitting in our parking lot because the grandmother decided to bring them to school, sit in the car, and have them connect to their Google Meet because she felt that it was that important that they join. You know, we're helping them the best we can, but families are really stepping up and doing a lot to make this work. It's a lot different than last spring. I never last spring would have found a classroom or a teacher that would have told me 100% attendance on a day, and now you can see the definite change in it. There's a greater importance. You know, the parents are really trying hard. I have parents that we struggled with last year that are now making every effort possible on their end, and it's just nice to see. They do want to be back here in person, don't get me wrong, but they are making the best of it while we're remote, and I'm happy to see that. Today, I actually observed my first teacher, it was a teacher observation of a virtual lesson. I joined some Google Meets, I've seen that in action, but I actually was in the classroom watching this teacher work today, and it was pretty amazing. It was seamless. It went well. It was as if the kids were sitting right there with me. I couldn't see the kids, she had them on her computer, but I could hear them interacting. She called on them, they were offering, raising their hand, they were offering things, they were all interacting, and a 45-minute session went by so quickly, and I was just amazed at how well it went. I was very pleased. It was a highlight of my day. I'm very glad that it's going that well for them. Some other things I just wanted to make you aware of, that even though things are different this year and we had to abandon some traditions here at Sandy Creek, the Thanksgiving feast did happen in grades one and two in a different fashion. Each classroom was able to hold a version of the feast in their room. Thanks to Buffy Peterson, Judy Allen, they kind of pitched in with the turkey and some different, the teachers did some different foods and had them in their room, and they took every precaution with gloves and the way they prepared it, handled it and such. And it was just nice to see it. And Jackie Hobbs still made the songs happen with the grade levels in music class, and then had, as some of you may have seen, she had some recordings of that done that were shared out. Moving ahead, as you know, Christmas is coming up very quickly. We were in the process of preparing some festivities and some different things to kind of bring the spirits up for the kids and the adults. A lot of that's on hold or been canceled, but we do have sleds that were donated. We're going to do a drawing. We're going to draw one student's name per grade level to win a free sled, and we'll call the winners. We'll post them for the kids, and the parents can come pick up a sled each kid in the grade levels want. I think they'll be excited for that. It was supposed to be kind of a guessing or counting jar, and they were going to have entries, and we would draw the winners, but we had to change it up a little bit. The last thing I put on here, I wanted to just, it's kind of some bragging. You hear so much negative stuff out there that I wanted to highlight some positive things happening. Weekly, 30 backpack program food bags go out to our families in this community. So 30 families on a weekly basis are benefiting from that, and I think that, you know, that's a huge number for our community, and we're helping those families. In addition to that, I asked Buffy Peterson to give me some numbers about Thanksgiving, and she's estimated 230 people in our community were helped with our Thanksgiving baskets that went out from our elementary side. And it's not just the elementary, but she services the whole district out of her office over there. And I knew it was a lot, but that number was kind of staggering to me when she gave it to me. In addition to that, coats, boots, snow pants, she, you know, 30 kids benefited from the Karen Cher and the last guy. And then Christmas is happening now, and you should see Buffy's office. It's, it looks like Santa's workshop in there with wrapping paper and gifts, and she's just putting together a lot of things with a lot of help as well. There's a lot of people in the community that step up and they donate things to Buffy and they work with her, and it's just good to see. Right now, when students are coming, parents are coming to pick up their packets, we have free hats and gloves that are available, and parents are very happy to grab an extra pair for the kid, because who doesn't need an extra pair of hats and gloves this time of year? And we had, I believe it was about 1,200 of those donated, 1,200 sets that were donated that we have been able to make available to our families. So lots of good things happening, and about 125 families are going to benefit from donations for Christmas and the holiday season that will go out soon. So I can't say enough thank yous to Buffy for all the coordination of this. She puts a lot of time and effort into it, but there are a lot of people that also step up and help her as well. So some positive things to share with you there.
Any questions for Tim?
I just want to say, Tim, real quickly, I was really thoroughly impressed with how prepared the younger kids were, just for instance, Jackson's in kindergarten, and I know that Mrs. Sanchi worked with the kids ahead of time to show them how to connect on their Google Meets and things like that. And honestly, just the last couple of days that we've been home, Jackson's able to do it pretty much on his own. I don't really have to stand over his shoulder because of the work that she did beforehand. So that was really appreciated from a parent's perspective.
Thank you. That's good to hear. The teachers, they actually did, they called it like, you know, the practice virtual day. We're going to try a remote learning day in class. We knew we had to prepare for this, and the teachers practiced it. The kids had days where part of the day they would practice getting on their device, and the teacher would actually go through their computer and cast things to their iPad or Chromebook. So those are all good ideas that staff came up with, and we promoted them to each other, and so it's good to hear that it's paying off. I don't think we've had, maybe, we may have had about a dozen families call in with some issues, various tech issues, a few connectivity issues, but Chaz and Chris have been very helpful with that as well. And I got to say, Liz has really done a fantastic job. I commended her today for being tech support, the front line before it gets to Chris and Chaz. She's really problem-solved a lot of things for parents right over the phone, and it doesn't have to go any further, so it's been nice to see.
Anything else for Tim?
Yeah, both Tim and Kevin, I want to say thank you for providing those positive notes for us as well. In this day and age, when we're hearing an awful lot of negative stuff with budgets and everything else that goes along with it, to hear those positive things is important, I think, to all of us, and it's something I think we should strive to come up with at every meeting, to just to have that positive note as part of the overall meeting. So thank you both for that.
And I would echo that, Kevin and Tim, and I would extend that to your staffs, too. They've done an incredible job in a terrible circumstance. So we appreciate everything that they're doing. Anything else? All right, moving ahead to the superintendent's report. Kyle?
I just have a few things. I just wanted to kind of reiterate what Kevin said in terms of the athletics. We really have no direction yet from Tullar, Cuomo, in terms of what we'll be able to do after January 4th. We have none of the low-risk sports that are allowed to go on, so we're waiting to hear about things like basketball and such as we move forward. I find it very difficult to believe that we will be allowed to move forward with that stuff, but at the same time, I was one of the guys that said there's no way he would allow us to play ball sports, and he did. Personally, I'm very thankful that the Frontier League, for the most part, stuck together. I don't, I don't think it was in our best interest to go forward, and I think it was the right move with what we did. So it remains to be seen what's going to happen after the break, but I don't have real high expectations that it's going to happen. John mentioned the transportation aid, and we've talked a lot about this, and I know you have it in your discussion item. We've gotten some real positive feedback over the last several weeks, Shelley and I, in terms of what they would like to do. There is a major, major push to have that reinstated for districts, because it is devastating to districts to withhold that transportation aid. As John said, we did what we thought we should do, what was best for our kids, and we worked our tails off, and, you know, and our bus drivers, we had 10 buses every day, as you know, that, well, not every day, but three days a week that took the food to the kids right to their homes. We thought we were very proud of ourselves, and then they pull the rug out from underneath us and say they're not going to give us anything. Obviously ridiculous. People are up in arms, there are tons of groups that are fighting this very hard, and I do believe, and maybe I'm just being, you know, positive and all that, but I do believe that it will work out in our favor. So, you know, I encourage you to send letters, if you want, to your representatives. I don't know any representative that doesn't think we deserve the aid in this. So I do see the Division of Budget pushing very hard. We've gotten a lot of letters from them, a lot of emails from them, saying they're doing their very best to make that happen. As far as COVID and the closings and all that, I know it's devastating to people. I know it's been very difficult. I know people want more information than I have been providing necessarily, but as you folks know, I have to be very cautious in what I do provide to people. We do have several cases, students within the district that are positive, I can tell you that. We have many, many teachers and a couple of staff members that are on quarantine so much that it makes it impossible for us to try to have school. We have dozens, literally dozens of students that are currently on quarantine. The best move for us right now is to do exactly what we're doing. And what people need to understand, and when you're out there in the community, yes, ultimately, it's Mr. Faulkner's decision, but I don't do this, you know, in a vacuum. I do it talking, you know, nonstop with the health department and trying to figure out every angle in the world to see how we can stay open. And I'm trying open. And I'm trying to, what folks need to understand, my ultimate job is to keep people safe, is to keep our students and our staff and our faculty safe. And that is, that is how I'm going to make these decisions based on whether or not we feel we can keep them safe. And right now, I firmly believe that the best thing to do is exactly what we're doing. I know that doesn't make everyone happy. I know there's a lot of upset folks out there, but I truly believe we're doing the right thing. We stayed open a hell of a lot longer than a lot of people did. Most districts did and I'm hoping that we can get back to normal after break, but there are no guarantees and we're constantly having to deal with just tons of information coming at us every day. And the other thing that folks need to understand is the Health Department is overwhelmed. So the information that we get from them is sometimes many, many days old. So we are getting information from family and parents long before the Health Department tells us anything in many instances. So that also hampers us a lot. So, you know, I'm doing the best I can. I'm making decisions based on the information that I have at the time, in consultation with my team in front of me and in consultation with the other superintendents in the county and consultation with the Health Department. So it's a, it's a nonstop 24-hour-a-day job, I will say that. And we're doing the very best we can do. So I don't know if there's any questions on that and maybe that's something to be talked about later.
Kyle, how are we handling contact tracing for cases that we're made aware of? Or is that something that the county is handling themselves?
It depends on the situation, Brian. This week, we took the lead in making some phone calls as far as some kids that we felt were exposed in a situation and that was because the Health Department and New York State Contact Tracers was way down on their list. So we had to make the calls to let the parents know that until further notice from the Health Department, their students were quarantined, their children were quarantined. So it really depends on the situation. It depends on how quickly we are contacted. And like I said, a lot of times there is a major delay as far as when we have this information presented to us. So it's really, it's never the same, it's never the same way twice, unfortunately. It's very inconsistent.
Any other questions on that for Kyle? Kyle, do you have anything else?
I do not at this time.
Okay. Okay, we will move ahead to item nine and that is discussions. Item 9.1 is Transportation Aid Letters. I know that the, you got the onboard newsletter, you found that State School Boards Association is all over this. And there, like Kyle had said, there is certainly encouragement for us to write letters to legislators, to the governor, to anyone we can. I know that they're well aware, you know, our legislators are well aware. They've been brought and gotten letters from different districts and different citizens, one thing and another, and officials in districts. So I don't know if, Kyle, did you have any more suggestions regarding those letters?
I mean, I really don't. I mean, feel free to write a letter. You could certainly write one as a Board of Education, but they are very aware of the devastating impact on the districts. Our local legislators are certainly well aware and doing everything that they can do. So, yeah.
I think, yeah, I think that the numbers absolutely support us because this is all over New York State and everybody is up in arms on this. And this, Kyle used the word ridiculous. That's what it is. So that's where we're at.
Yeah, when this, when this first came up and we were first notified and shortly thereafter, there was a form letter that was sent out to board members from outside the district that they were suggesting that we use, and I think everybody probably got it at one point or another in their board email. Again, it's a form letter. We get them every once in a while on various things. And I suggested that, you know, we as a board utilize that letter, sign it and send it off. But that was before we heard a lot of what we're hearing now. So again, is it something we want to do as a board? Take that form letter and either adjust it for our purpose or I think for the most part, with these form letters, you can just put your name to it and send it off to, I forget who they were suggesting at this point, that we send it to, but certainly we could send it to all of our local, or all of our politicians, state politicians. But if what we're reading is correct, it may be a moot point. So it's up to the rest of you, I guess, if we want to discuss that a little bit more and take the extra effort of sending the letter. It's a board decision, I guess, and we can, we can talk about that a little bit more.
In the packet, I had sent the letter and in the packet is the form letter that I got back from Congressman Barclay. I think it was Barclay that sent back the form letter. I didn't get anything back from the other letter that I sent out. So you may get a response, you may not.
Yeah, and I don't know that we're particularly looking for a response more than we're looking to add our voice to the multitude of voices that are already yammering at our state politicians. So again, is it going to make a difference? I'm sorry, Kyle.
Shelley and I could certainly write one on behalf of the board and send it.
That sounds good. Certainly couldn't hurt. All right. Any, anything else regarding that issue? Okay, under discussion items, other discussion items, the only thing I might add is that you have in your packet, the board goals. I drafted those goals based on my recollections of all the discussions we had had at retreats and other, other places. I didn't know if anybody had reviewed those and wanted to tweak that at all. We will be voting on those goals on item, I believe it's 11.3 coming up. So I didn't know if there was any further discussion or that they looked pretty good to you guys. Any changes anybody wanted in those?
Well, good, John.
You did a nice job, John.
Okay, I appreciate that. And there being no discussion on that, we'll move to item 10, which is communications. I have no information if there are any items, any issues there to be discussed. We will move ahead to item 11. Item 11 being action items. And the first item would be 11.1 and that is the master list of substitutes for instructional staff and support staff. And I would take, I would take a motion on that item.
I'll move.
Joe moves?
I'll second.
Heidi seconds. Now take a vote. Aye. Brian?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
And Michelle? That motion passes. Heidi, you were, you were in full of on that vote?
Sorry about that, guys.
I'm an aye, John. Michelle's back if you want to get her vote.
Yep, Michelle?
I vote yes on the board goals, if that's what we're talking about.
No, we're talking about the master substitute list.
Oh, then yes, I pass and vote to pass it.
Thank you. That, that motion passes. Moving ahead to item 11.2 and that is the acceptance of the audit report, which we just had discussion on from Derek Angelo from Len Barisimo. This is a vote to accept that and I would take a motion on that.
I'll move.
Mark moves. Do we have a second?
I'll second, John.
Shell seconds. Take a vote on that. Aye. Brian?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
And Michelle?
Aye.
Okay. Item 11.3 is the acceptance approval of the board goals. And I would take a motion on that.
I'll move.
Heidi moves?
I'll second.
Andrea seconds. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? And that would be, I would say aye. I got to get used to this roll call. Mark? Joe?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
And Michelle?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, guys. Moving ahead to the, we're onto item 12 and that is executive session. And I know some of the board members had indicated that they felt there would be a need for executive session for purposes of personnel at this point. If that's the, I would take a motion on that item.
I'll move.
I'll move.
Okay, Joe moves. Andrea, Heidi, Heidi seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 That motion carried.
Aye.
All right. For the purposes of the folks who are live streaming this, following executive session, there will be no action other than the move to adjourn and the vote on that. So this will essentially conclude that, that the business meeting. So at this point, we are in executive session. Chad?